Payments, Mr.
Commissioner, notice of term payment.
Oh, yes.
It's just a notice.
All right. Sheriff's Transport Driver. Newly noted. Commissioner Norby.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the payments A, B, and C, and there's also a burial payment on C seven, I'll approve.
All right, we have a motion.
Second, the payment claims.
Second by Commissioner McBride. Any discussion on any of those? You're gonna look at that other.
Yeah, we'll do it.
All right. So, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, that motion carries. And this WCD area, what's a V in three eight? Fall tour. I don't know my Roman numerals very well.
Area eight.
It is eight.
Okay.
Do we know if this is an annual thing, or is this the first time they've done this, or?
I don't recall in the past.
It's the eighth one, I think.
Well, I suppose it's the point.
They didn't write us.
But maybe it's not always held in files, and maybe they rotated around.
Okay, I move for, as a board activity.
All right, we've got a motion.
Second.
Second, to approve this WCD. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries unanimously. Board chair signature to the grand bones and board letters, Governor Dayton and MHS. All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Norby. Second by Commissioner McBride. And then Kevin can sign this and get it off of the desk. Any discussion on this? That pertains to everything we had talked about in this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, that motion carries. Resolution to authorize board chair and county director's signatures on state of Minnesota airport maintenance operations grant contract.
Move on, contract with state of Minnesota.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution of authorized signatures. Any discussion on that?
I believe that me and partners with the city, they have to probably do the same thing.
Correct.
Okay. And timing, all the activity work.
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both opposed, motion carries unanimously. Reauthorization for the chair, agreement on phase three terminal, that's a different one.
It is a different one, yes.
So, a phase three terminal project payment due to the short timeline requirements. Wishes of the board on that.
I guess, Mr. Chair, we need to, therefore, we need to have that grant side or the contract side.
Motion now?
Yep.
Second motion.
Motion by Commissioner McBride, second by Commissioner Norby to approve grant AIP three dash twenty-seven and a bunch of other numbers, huh? Three point five million. Due to the F A by September eighth, so it's coming up pretty quick. All right, any other questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Oh, information system. Aye. Spenditure for a computer for the environmental service department. Go ahead, Jackie.
This expenditure was not planned for in the 2017 budget, but there are funds available. Plan right now is to purchase it with IS funds. If I run a little short, we'll revert to contingency funds, but otherwise, I believe that it will fit within the budget.
Certainly necessary, it's to accommodate the point.
It will make for very nice ease of working both in the office and out of the office, which is the goal.
That's great. All right, well wishes aboard.
I'm going to look at the.
Motion by Commissioner Norby.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McBride to approve the expenditures presented. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, that motion carries. Land capital, all the expenditure for replacement devices.
And these were budgeted for the 2017 budget, simply buying replacement equipment. Some are PCs, a couple of laptops, but that is what we're doing. You can see that not all of it's coming out of the IS into the budget, some is coming out of Health and Human Services, some highway, some land and forestry, and the department heads are all aware that the orders are being placed, and they'll be anticipating me asking for money.
Replacement devices, if my good friend Charles Lepper were here, he'd say, "We're all about mice." All wishes aboard on that.
Budget item, I will approve.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Land capital, all the expenditure for the implementation of the Office 365, Office Pro Plus, that's, what's that mean?
So, Office Pro Plus is the new version of Office software. Once we enter into this agreement, we will always be kept current with our version of Office. Right now, we buy licenses periodically. I split it up about one-fifth each year, but we own them only in that version, so there's no upgrades, right? To get the upgrades, we're costing significantly more. And Office Pro Plus is just the Office software, but it would keep us current. But this would be an ongoing annual cost, I want to make sure you understand that, so you see this number every year in my budget, I can't guarantee it won't go up other than the first two years, it guaranteed me price freeze for three years.
It's fairly expensive.
It is. I actually, before I came in here, I did a little breakdown of what a ten-year cost would be. If we continued on buying licenses here and there as we go, over ten years, we would spend $153,000. And that's kind of how we've been doing things already. The issue that we have with using that process is that our users have to wait three to four years, sometimes five years, before they get into a version of Office. In the past, that really didn't matter, but as we collaborate more and more with state and other agencies, they're using this newer version of Office, and it becomes a hurdle for a lot of our users to not have a current version.
And you budgeted for this?
This is budgeted for, I actually budgeted $16,000 for it, for 2017, and I did include in the 2018 budget request anticipating approval or needing to do something to keep us moving forward with Office.
You came in and we had some discussion on this, didn't we?
Maybe during the budget planning, and it was something I contemplated for 2016, actually, when we replaced Exchange Server, but I didn't feel that Microsoft was, what they had was not right for us at the time, and because our Office version was so far behind or spread out, it wouldn't have been a good fit at the time.
You feel this is probably the lowest cost weightable forward in the future?
I think it's the lowest cost with keeping us current. You know, I mean, obviously, the lowest cost would be not be current, but then we encounter some issues.
Great. Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, very expensive, and I think we don't have a lot of choice, so I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Norby.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McBride. Any further discussion on this? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries.
Thank you. We just spent a lot of money today.
We'll get it out of the guy just walking in.
There you go. Money maker.
Timing was perfect. Aye, Nathan.
Between Nathan and Cap, they will get it back.
Health and Human Services. How are you doing today?
Good, how are you?
Good. Summer's about over.
It is, it is. I said one on the thing, so there's plenty.
All right, Health and Human Service business, first item is renewal of Goods, Marriage, and Society, Northland Assistant Living Housing Support Agreement.
Yes, these, all of these agreements under general business here are all just renewals, they're just yearly renewals. There is no change in any kind of funding or anything like that. They're pretty standard.
So, we can do one through six as a single motion?
Yes.
Okay.
And move one through six in Health and Human Services, in general business.
All right, thank you, Commissioner McBride.
Is item three different?
Well, no, there's no money there or anything, and it really, it's just a renewal as well.
What motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Norby. Any further discussion? Well, we should address on the, number two is renewal of ISD 361 Financial Agreement, the amendment the Coochin County Collaborative, Ron was talking about, another Coochin County Federal and Northland Counseling Purchase Service Agreement, renewal of Coochin County Health Service, Jack Pine Chateau Housing Support Agreement, and approve the renewal of Ridgeview LLC Housing Support Agreement. So, with no further discussion, I'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries unanimously. And burial payments.
Two of those.
Those were approved under payments.
Oh, that's right, yeah. And foster daycare licensing.
Yes. And then we have Lacy Palmer, who is a re-licensed for daycare for 12 children. Do you want to group these all together, two of them?
I think so.
Okay. And then Amber Black, Pamela Rudnerud, and Sarah Vance are all closing their daycares at the provider's request.
Okay.
It's getting harder.
I know.
It's getting harder.
I know.
Could cause problems in the future.
Oh, it does cause problems already for people looking for work and trying to meet their work requirements for different programs.
I've said before, I actually think it prevents some people from moving into the area.
Oh, I, yeah, I believe it does, although I have to say that it's a problem everywhere, it isn't just our problem. It's quite extensive. It's, as I've said before, a lot of it has to do with the DHS rules and regulations for licensing and relicensing and, you know, what they have to do to comply. However, I believe that one of these closings is the daycare provider found other employment, one is moving out of the area, and I believe the other one is retiring.
And move on recommendations for licensing and closure of the daycare centers.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which is up for you to sign then.
All right.
Get on a break, give us a second. I have a question for you. Go ahead.
Okay.
You gotta remember what it was though.
Right here, huh? We got a ten-minute break.
Yeah. It'd be good for us to get out there.
I think it was a good idea.
Maybe just something else. Set something up.
Sure, do any preference on the time?
Maybe sometime October, huh?
I mean, I said it was a time when there was something that folks still never interested in, something that affected that area. I don't know if on that would be you.
Maybe you could let Wayne know, he might have.
Yeah, I'll ask him.
That's a bad thing, too.
Well, I could.
We're just hoping to be down there and feel forgotten. So, we're one minute from ten, I think we go a little farther. Welcome, Nathan.
Thank you.
We're here for land and forestry business, and we review results of the August 2nd timber auction.
Yep, so just here to recap our August 2nd timber auction that we held in Big Falls, we sold, ended up selling a little under 21,000 cords of timber for a total sale value of roughly $693,000. We had two tracts that did not sell the day of the auction. One of those tracts has since been picked up or at the counter, and one remains unsold. Timber prices, we're kind of seeing, if you look at a weighted average of all species, we're kind of, actually, we bumped up, the average price was up a little bit, which was, you know, but we're still, they're kind of, it was a, you know, nominal increase, we're still kind of right in there where we have been over the past year or so.
All right, and then we're looking at an easement from Minnesota Power.
Yeah, so as you'll recall, we've already granted, we've granted Minnesota Power the majority of their easements required across tax-defended land for the Great Northern Transmission Line. This particular easement is, they, where they cross the Big Fork River north of Big Falls, just when they get on the east side of the river, there's a turn in the line, and they had to re-engineer their turn structure, so they need another, I think this is like six tenths of an acre of additional easement adjacent to where we've already granted an easement, so it's almost a, you know, it's a nominal ease as well, so. This is all the easement language, it's the same language that we've used with the two previous easements that we've granted, so.
Is Joe aware of this, Nathan?
That easement, Joe Sutherland?
Yeah.
I did not send this to him.
I don't think, it doesn't affect?
It shouldn't have, no, this is out in the end of the forest, it burned, so.
Sorry.
So, this, you know, roughly six or under, just under seven tenths of an acre compensation to the county, we're using the same figures as we used before, too, for compensation, so it's a little under $700 that we will receive in payment. Also, the Minnesota Power is looking to come to update the board on September 19th, tentatively, I think, to just give you guys an update on the progress of the construction, so.
That'd be really good.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from Joe, I mean, he's, obviously, he's got the financial and the service of the roads, but I haven't heard anything, so. Yeah, that'd be good for them to come, appreciate that.
I would move this chair to approve easement with Minnesota Power.
Okay, we've got a motion. And a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both, motion carries unanimously. Watch this guy behave, then.
Thank you. And then I'll, I can just deal with Chairman A on signature.
He uses this. Chairman D.
Yeah, it's written out in the little.
Oh, yeah. And there's no rush on it.
No, there's no rush, so.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
Okay, Dale, that was timely. Welcome.
Morning.
How you doing?
Okay.
You were doing okay until you had us come in here.
Well, yeah. That's, that doesn't bother me that much anymore after 27. We have Mike and Bonnie with us today. I'll let you guys introduce yourselves, but we're gonna discuss.
Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Discuss some bonds and loans for the Island View Sewer Project.
What's your options?
Hey, Ron.
Hi, Ron.
I'm Wade.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you, thank you. Is that Jenny?
Hi, nice to meet you.
Yeah, if you want to get anything done, you gotta talk to her or something.
Wade is the primary board member of the Island View Sewer Project, Ryan is also involved quite a bit, so. But I've been working with Scott Harder and Mike here to try to get some from the role on this one, this young table presentation, create a presentation on fill-in, what we have as options.
Well, enlighten us, Mike, we need.
Okay, very good. I work for a firm called David Brown Associates, based out of Minneapolis. Actually, all of our associates are home-based. I actually work out of my home in southeastern Minnesota. We got offices in Waconia and Parkers Prairie, and we just feel like it's a competitive advantage, and so most of my work is done in southeastern Minnesota. However, through my personal relationship with Minnesota Water Association, I believe Scott Harder had reached out to us about, you know, can you run some scenarios based on this level of funding, that level of funding, that sort of thing?
Scott's been, we've had a long-term association with Scott on the previous wastewater project at Jack Finch, too, so.
Okay, when was that, how long?
Well, that's gotta be 11, 12 years, almost.
Yeah, we completed it in 2008. That was an $10 million project, but public facilities authority funded for that, so we got a 1% loan for 20 years.
Yes.
Tried to convince him to give us the same thing, but he did.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're dealing with market on this, but you're looking at 16-something million in grants, so that's not too shabby.
Right, yeah, we did pretty well there.
Right, so, if, it's all right, I'd just like to ask the board, other than, you know, the PFA, because that technically is a bond issue, even though the state calls it a loan, it's a bond issue that you sell to the state of Minnesota, have any of this board been involved in the bonding process, conventional bonding-wise? Because I think it might have been 1995, may have been the last time.
I am, uh.
Okay.
I was here then, but I don't recall, what was it for?
I don't remember what it was for, but I think it was about $2 million, so, I don't. What I did is I looked online and then opened up the official statement to see how much you'd borrow and so forth.
Yeah.
Look at credit rating and so forth.
Which is all high, right?
Credit rating?
Yeah.
Well, in fact, in your 1995 issue, it carried a triple-A rating, but that's because they had insured the bonds, they had actually purchased an insurance policy. I think the underlying rating, at one point, was an A on your 1990 bonds. Now, if you've received an upgrade since then, I didn't see it, but I expect it would be in that magnitude, which is not a terrible rating.
Between 92 and 95, I mean, we need to prove the county's financial standing significantly.
Oh, fantastic, great. Well, I'm here to present recommendations on, you know, we're not asking you to sign your life away today. If you agree with my recommendations today, all I'm asking you to do is take action on a resolution that sets a sale date for the bonds, which would be your meeting in September, September 26th is the date. In your packets was a letter, and I guess a very difficult-to-read spreadsheet with the cash flow, numbers laid out, I was just gonna speak to those, but since the, since the board has not been, or two of you have not been through the bonding process, and the chair was quite a while ago, maybe I just spent 30 seconds or so kind of talking to you about bond issues in general. They're different than loans in the sense that we are not securing the borrowing with any kind of mortgages or liens or anything like that, we're securing the bonds with a pledge, called the general obligation pledge, meaning the county's backing these bonds. If there's any shortfall in special assessment revenue, if there's any shortfall in revenues from the East Coochin Sanitary Sewer District, the entire county is, you know, on the hook to make up the difference and make the payments. In Minnesota, that's been very successful. If there's been any, there's been very, very few defaults on general obligations in Minnesota, so one of the proud things I like to say about Minnesota is that we pay our bills in the state. Now, the benefit for that general obligation pledge is that you get a much better interest rate than you would if you did a pure revenue situation, so imagine if you went to market telling folks, "We'll pledge those assessment revenues, and we'll pledge the sewer district charges, but if for any reason they fall short, tough cookies," imagine the interest rate that you might get, and the difficulty just in placing the bonds themselves. There's a variety of fingers in your pie in terms of selling bonds, it's an expensive proposition, if you were to look at those, that chart, we've got $36,000 in issuance expenses. One I'd really like to focus on is underwriter's discount. Typically, when you sell a bond, you know, you'll have a single purchaser of that bond, but they have no intent to hold themselves. Their intent is to cut this thing up and resell it to their customers for profit, all right? They're the wholesalers, and then they sell it retail on the other side. A standard practice when we do a conventional bond sales, often to offer a discount allowance. That's where, as an example, let's say we needed $100,000 in bonds, we could offer by law up to 2% discount, the underwriter might purchase that bond for 98 grand, so the county would only get 98 grand, but then they turn around and sell it for the full $100,000. And you'll notice on this recommendation that we've got 0% allocated for discount. That's not to say that the purchaser of the bonds won't get fingers in the pie, as I like to say, they will, it's just that we're saying that they have to make their money on the re-offering of the bonds, basically pulling their money out of the interest rate. So, if you were to look at the interest rates down below that I'm projecting, which are high, I do, I'm coming in a little high because I like to have a little cushion, because I don't know where rates will be a month from now, they could be lower, they could be higher, I just don't know. But if you were to look at an issue that's sold on a discount basis, and every maturity was a serial sale, you'd see yields on those principal payments much lower than what's shown. But what I'm suggesting is that these underwriters extract their profit out of the interest rate, and what that does is it increases the amount of money that you get upfront from the project. We've got a 20-something million dollar project here, and I understand, you know, it's a little bit tight, even with all the grants, you know, depending on what the county decides, there's a potential of those five cabins, I think, at the end of one particular road that you may or may not extend to. That will dictate how much contingency you have for overruns and one.
We've got five homes on another development area, too. There's actually two areas that are very expensive.
Sure.
But they were, they were part of the original plan, and we did, you know, we did, we got what we thought was gonna be enough funding, you know, that could change, too, if anyone we run into, so.
Well, I've sized the bond issue on the full 20 million and change with the idea that you would have the flexibility then to determine the actual final scope of the project, you know, once you have the funds on hand. Okay, moving on, a lot of the recommendations, in terms of statutory authority, we have to cite that, this is very simple, sewer authority is one of the most flexible types of authority. Now, while special assessments are being used, and those can be challenged and so forth, there is no challenge to the actual issuance of this bond. Some bonds might require referendum, some bonds can be subject to a voter petition to force referendum, but no such thing applies here. This does not apply to any kind of statutory net debt of the county. Again, it's one of the most flexible authorities there is, just because sewer is such a vital service. In terms of term, I've gone with the 20 years simply to mirror the term that's being offered on the assessments. And for a utility project, I think that's suitable, because these things last for long periods of time, you never want to borrow money longer than the life of the asset, hopefully this lasts much longer than that. If you look at the bottom of the cash flow, you'll see the revenues that are identified, the assessment revenue was based on 1.5 million and change being assessed over 20 years, and then the system revenues, now that one's a little bit dicey in that we're not quite sure when the project will be fully complete and when you'll actually start billing these charges, and then Dale was kind enough to work with me and to determine that we think 2019 might be the first year. Because of that lack of sewer district revenue in that first year, if you go over to the left on the principal payments, one of the benefits and differences between a loan and a bond issue is we get to decide, you and I, how to structure the principal payments, and we usually design that around our revenue stream. You know, if there's no revenue in a particular year, we push the principal off, so you'll see that there's not a principal payment due until February 1st, 2020, and that's because of not collecting sewer district revenue likely until 2019.
Excuse me, this is my fault, the board does not have a copy of that emergency schedule in their package.
Oh, you don't?
No, they don't. I pulled that because I put the sources and uses, and I did not get that, so maybe I should make them some copies.
Make some copies of those.
Yeah.
I got the highlights online. Great, thank you.
When we're not doing the utilization, are we paying interest?
Yes, yep, yep, and unfortunately, half of my presentation, you probably are stretching your heads because you haven't been able to follow along, but yes, the first, there would be payments due prior to February 1st, 2020, like interest payments only, it's just that the first principal payment wouldn't be until then. So, we are anticipating assessment revenue starting next year, so.
So, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think here from the board's perspective, we would have to, we'd have to put up some funding for cash flow for that first year.
Not if you are certifying assessments this fall for collection next year, because as you'll see when the copies come, that's not going to occur.
I don't know if we'll be able to certify this fall.
I think you have until mid-November, by law.
Okay.
We'll have to ask Dale when he comes in here, because I'm not sure on that schedule.
In my conversations with Dale and SCA, since Scott Harder, I was told this fall.
Okay, all right.
Now, if that's not true, we can. Now, if that's not true, we can rearrange the structure. If you authorize me to rearrange the principal based on whatever you tell me here in the next few minutes, we can still move forward without losing any ground.
And if we have, and here, just so it's clear, then one of the snags that will not occur is if we're having trouble getting a easement from somewhere, or those types of things, has nothing to do with this.
No, correct. You have the authority to borrow the money, whether you handle all the physical aspects of a project.
Because I became an issue twelve years ago when we were putting that project together. We had a few that we weren't able to obtain.
And these have been for what?
For the wastewater lines.
From the road to the house?
Yes.
Okay, let's.
We engineered that a bit differently. The other project, we went through a lot of private properties, tried to do the shortest route. This one, we concentrated much more on public access, along the roadway, things like that.
One of the questions I did have for Dale is, we talked about the general obligation pledge. The other reason we're able to get better interest rates than a commercial loan, for instance, is because the borrowing is tax exempt. So when we pay interest to the bondholders, they don't have to declare it on their income taxes. And as such, they allow for a lower rate. The kicker is that we've gotta pay for public stuff. So when Dale told me on the phone one day that the intent was to not only put, you know, main, but also some line with grinder pumps, you know, to the house, I thought, oh, private. And he says, no, no, there'll be easements and those will be public. Perfect.
We have to secure them.
So the answer to your question, Chair, is that?
I shouldn't say, just so it's clear though, I don't want you to think we own it. What we do is we procure an easement, like type easement for that section.
Correct, and but it's public law.
Yes.
Yes, all right. Even though it's technically, that'll be fine. Let's go to some more.
Well, we talked a little bit about credit rating, but is credit rating, is really significant as far as determining what interest rate's gonna be?
Absolutely.
It still should be covered. Credit rating isn't a factor.
Yes, I am recommending that we secure credit rating, standard and course. You know, the cost of that is eleven thousand five hundred dollars for a bond issue of the size I'm suggesting here. And the interest you'll save will far exceed that. I mean, I mean by tens and tens of thousands of dollars. So it could be a hundred plus thousand dollars in lower interest because of that rating. And I'm also suggesting that you further secure the state of Minnesota. You did a PFA loan. Another thing that PFA does do is they can basically co-sign a loan. So for an extra five hundred dollars, they will guarantee your bonds. And now you are going to get the benefit of the state's credit rating, which is double A plus.
Which will reduce our amount.
For the extra five hundred dollars, absolutely worth it. Now, I will tell you, in my experience, we don't get the full benefit of the double A plus state rating, but it will trade slightly better than your rating on its own. And so for five hundred dollars on a three point six million dollar deal, I think it's worth your time.
Pretty good deal.
Yeah, yeah.
The other question we have, Dale, what you wrote in the room, is are we gonna be able to get the timelines?
In terms of certifying assessments this fall?
If we follow these, and we would be, the closing date would be October seventeenth. And then we'd have money, some money shortly after.
Oh, on October seventeenth, you'd have the money?
One point five million or something like that. We should be able to handle that. Yeah.
Okay, because the revenue from those assessments are, according to the schedule, anticipated to come in on next year's taxes.
Yeah, and I had a question about that, because the way it'll work is we will start assessing, the assessment portion, January first, two thousand eighteen.
Payable eighteen.
But it won't show up until tax time, taxes will open in May, which is fine by this.
Right.
The principal payment, you have not until February two thousand nineteen, twenty. Is that holding it back a little too far? Because we'll be done, we will be charging a debt service as we hook up. If a group of twenty-five homes hooks up this year, we will start charging that debt service right away.
Yeah, and, you know, we, you and I have talked about that, that maybe the first full year might not be until two thousand nineteen in terms of everyone.
Yeah, the first full year would probably.
You know, we can certainly add some principal. You know, the more principal we add upfront, the more efficient this thing is, of course. The danger, of course, is that if those revenues are not realized, remember the general obligation, it means you'll be relying on reserves in the county to make up the difference.
So that's up to the board if we wanna play that game. And if we do fall behind, we gotta pull up reserves for a little while and have, you know, go backwards like that, but.
What amount would you be talking about, Dale, if we had to pull up to make that, make a whole?
Could be a couple hundred grand.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it'd be over a couple hundred grand.
I mean, you also have reserve eschuch too.
That's my thought, is if we get that principal getting paid right away, sooner the better as far as long.
It has no bearing on me or on issuance costs, so let's be clear. So when I tell you what I'm about to say, I don't want you to think I have some motive here. My concern is, is that I understand that the project's fairly tight and that if you do have reserves available, if there are some overruns, would cash and these, would reserves be better served to just hold on to that, be a little more conservative on our planned revenues? And then you can rely on those for actual project costs if needed.
You know, I think to this issue, we would have to sit out and look at our budget here before we made a decision like that. But I suppose sooner the better.
Yeah, but we'd need some sort of indication, because, you know, if you agree with the recommendations today, you know, we'd get them all rolling tomorrow. And because one of the things that has to happen before September twenty-sixth is, would be to get that official statement prepared, it's a disclosure statement, which is the basis for your rating. And, you know, that takes quite a bit of work. So one of the things that goes in there is how much principal and how is it going to be allocated?
We'll start with you, absolutely.
Well, nobody will see me at all because I'm real short. Are you talking, Chair?
Welcome, thank you for coming today.
Yes, I'm here once again to talk about wild parsnip, as you probably already figured out. But I wanted to let you know that I, the comments that I made last time about some of the constraints that they have dealing with the wild parsnip, you know, financial and equipment and that. I did talk to Dan Tom down in Cook, and he reiterated some of the comments that you had. So it looks like budgeting is a big problem a lot of times. State budgeting, state highway budgeting and that, their budget hasn't changed apparently in a number of years and fallen behind because of inflation. But I understand that Rob Eklund's going to be around this Friday or something, some golf thing's going on.
It's in notes in two weeks.
Is it in two weeks?
Yeah, it's the eighth. His fundraiser is the eighth.
If you would make an effort to try to talk to him, to push the state budget or something to help us, I would appreciate that. And I do want to say, the wild parsnip, right in my section, was cut on highway. It was one of the worst areas around. And I want, I did thank Dan Tom and I do appreciate the work that people do to try and get it in control. But I want to suggest that there be some, by these various organizations and agencies, some review and some evaluation of how to approach this problem collaboratively more, plan ahead more, instead of waiting until somebody like me comes in, which I think is probably what you wanna do, but I guess you just have to push people to do it a little bit more.
Don't you ever be afraid to come in and wait for your minute, so.
You know, and you've brought it forward many times here. I've been doing a lot of traveling around the state in the last month or so, even into Wisconsin. And this problem is overwhelming.
Yes.
I, it's, it's one of these deals that I don't, you're never going to eradicate it. We can just hope to control it because it's here.
I think this year, Gene, we've learned a lot as far as how many times you have to mow and when you have to mow. I think this has been kind of a learning year, so.
Yeah, and he's absolutely correct. You're not gonna get rid of all of it, because in my neighborhood, there's a few yards or whatever that have a lot and some that I have really pretty good control. But I think it is something that if we plan ahead for it more, we'll be able to kind of get control of it better.
But you would rather them mow it to wild parsnips, but it went around the milkweed?
I would actually like, well, actually, I'd like to see some collaborative efforts going with some educational institutions and have internships or something for people that are in biology or agriculture or something to come in and study this a little bit more, work on it, to control it by various means, because some of the sprays are dangerous for the pollinators. And I find that one of the best things that works, but if you have a feel of it, it isn't gonna be any fun, it wouldn't work, is to take a spade and whack it a couple of inches below the ground. And that is about the best way to.
Yeah, cut that root right off.
Yep, yep. But I think it would be an interesting study, because it is a problem that's growing in multiple states, to have some educational institutions maybe involved, some kind of a grant thing or something maybe between the state and the schools or some way to get people out there looking at it more.
I did notice after you were in last time, just, I started looking too, a comment, a lot of things hadn't been mowed, but they were shortly after.
Yeah, and some still isn't yet been. And I heard that.
They can't reach it, it's just too far into the right of way, you can't reach it.
Yep, and I heard from another person at Moonlight Rock area where people like to walk a lot of times, kind of, they're not doing it because the wild parsnip is bad and it gets on their dogs, if the dogs are running in that.
I haven't been up there.
So, I haven't been out there lately either, but where Steve Sweet used to live, that road, I often even know Steve.
Yeah.
On that area.
No, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, he died from, what was that? It's.
Hepatitis C.
Hepatitis, yeah.
And now they might be able to cure it.
That was, he was a good kid. All right, well, hey, anything else?
Well, I appreciate your efforts and I know you're gonna stay on because you don't wanna see me here every week.
Hey, I'd love to see you here every week. You come in anytime you want. We appreciate your coming, because, you know, I always tell people, you know, we don't know there's a problem unless people are telling us a lot of things.
Well, we may have, Gary, you may be able to say something. Nilo Kaulenin came out to my place with a camera. He's about, what is he, ten?
Yeah.
Ten, and he took some shots and I talked and that about the wild parsnip in my area at various stages of growth and that, that will be at a level that, an ordinary everyday level, I don't know the technical terms, and it may end up on YouTube.
Good. That's terrific. That's great.
But it's kind of a, it was great to see a young person that was interested in something to build as a, to get involved in it. And I think that's part of it, is we need to get the word out there to the public, to get them involved in it.
Parsnip burn?
Yes.
That's me.
Oh, is it? Oh, yes. And I understand you shouldn't burn it either, I've heard, because it can get into your lungs and the same thing can happen to your lungs. So it's a very dangerous.
Well, education is, you know, the way to go, because.
And I like, the newspaper has a beat of the month article, which I think is very good too. So I think maybe we just kind of continue to educate annually and during the years, that would be a very helpful thing to keep it on top of people's minds. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Come anytime, though.
Oh, I will.
We'd like that. Anyone else? Update from, from our crew leader?
Yep. You know, there was a period of time I went out with a pretty bad shoulder surgery and I say, you didn't get a quarterly for.
I remember that.
A period of time and.
For the audience, what we're talking about here is our sentence to serve program. So just so everybody knows, this gentleman has led that crew for a long, gee, how many years?
Eighteen years, well over eighteen years.
Long time. I remember when you started.
Yep.
And it's gone very well.
Yep.
It's a popular program with the public, because, and actually, it's good for, it's good for those we have incarcerated, because they're able to do things that benefit the community. And so it's, all in all, it's worked real well. Certainly out at the transfer station, where they've done a lot of work. When we had the flood, sandbagging, and yeah, I mean, it's, so it's, it's really a neat program. I've even talked to many of the people who were incarcerated that worked and said how nice it was to be, they enjoy it, because you get out of the, out of the locked facility. So, yeah, it works well.
Yeah, it seems to be good all the way around, so it's, it's good. But anyway, I, the quarterly's are back in again, and in the meantime, I was out, I hadn't met Jenny yet, and so we got together and met and kind of talked about, I think, I think it was the first quarterly I gave since I got back, I gave to her, and then she asked if I'd be interested in giving an update to the board, and so, yeah, so here I am. But our quarterly's, I don't know if you'll notice on there, it's the same one I've done for quite a few years, but it gives a breakdown of different things I'll let you. It, anyway, it gives a breakdown of different things. It tells the agency breakdown, where the work goes to is the first thing. And I, you maybe remember years ago, there was some discussion on percentages and the county's always been heavily favored. Even when I was a fifty-fifty split, I was giving the county ninety-seven percent of the work. And I try to take care of my county, I love this county, and that's where the work's always gonna go, if I have a choice, it matters. You'll see it reflected again, actually, ninety-two percent is lower than normally is, I must have had, I probably had some training stuff or something, I don't remember. Then if you move down, you can see, the next thing is the agency breakdown within the county, and that just kind of tells where the work has went within the county. There are times on here, because it's a, I work ten-hour days, the crew gets, works eight of those hours, so they get credit for it. Nowadays, with the paperwork part of it, where you have to track every single thing, I might do three hours here, four hours here. I don't get to really specifically break down every hour and a half hour. So there's an hour here and an hour there that's done in the county that really doesn't get listed, because I would have to do seven different things instead of just one. So it's kind of, there's agencies throughout the county I do work for all the time, really. But the ones I do the most for, then they might get credit for the full eight that day. But I try to represent it as best I can. And generally, it's, you know, there used to be two crew leaders, now it's me, and it's really a handful trying to stay up on their cycling, and it's, it is a good, it is a good thing, because I don't, I can take quite a diverse crowd of people and we can teach them how to do it and they can handle it. It's not, you know, it's not horribly physically demanding or anything, it's stuff I can get everybody to do in some manner, even if they're disabled or whatever, and it's a need that we really, the plastics and stuff just keep coming in, you know, even with friends getting involved in it. It's still all I can handle to stay up on it, so. It is quite a need and, and it's, it really works well, because in the winter, you know, I mean, we're outside shoveling and stuff too, but we can get in there and sort and do work that they need done when it's forty below or thirty below and still do stuff. And I kind of plan around weather a lot too. And the same, if it's ninety degrees, I can, I'll try to do something maybe inside that building a little cooler or whatever. And when it's, whatever other temperatures, we're out, you know, but our exposure outside, I can try to minimize as much as I can in those conditions and we still, it's just, it's a good thing, it's been really working well.
You bring up a good point about, you know, when this program started, we had two crew leaders. And I mean, our jail population was probably around twelve, ten. Fast forward here, eighteen years, now we've got one crew leader and the jail population is full. And so, I mean, that, it's a real credit to you that you've been able to handle and take over all of this, because it's, it's a challenge, I know it is.
Yeah.
But the work that's done for the, on behalf of the county here, I mean, thank you.
Yeah.
Can't say enough.
It's also too, Mr., they're not all jail inmates.
No.
A lot of people are sentenced.
Right.
By the court to, as, as public service and under your two leeches.
I always do jail populations as an indicator of more people that are gonna be.
Right.
Explain your funding again, exactly how you're funded.
Well, basically, and you could maybe correct me if I'm wrong, it's seventy-five percent county funded at this point and twenty-five percent state, and it used to be fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty when I first came.
Yeah, and they went down to that now.
That's, that's when we had to reduce to one crew leader.
Right, right, yeah. So that's, I mean, that's what I can tell you about it for the rest of the particulars. I really can't, I mean, it's.
I just think it's important the public to know that the county does fund sentence to serve and, you know, it's a very important function for.
Well, that's why I have no problem when the majority of the work is done for the county.
Right.
Because at this point, we're picking up the tab.
Right.
But it is an issue we should continue to raise with our legislators, because, you know, a typical state deal here, they set that up and then they back out on the funding and they were short of money.
Yep.
And they're not anymore, and this is a program that was so popular with the public.
Yeah. Yeah.
And good for, good for those who are sentenced, too.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a win-win all the way around.
It is, really is.
You learn work ethics and...
Yeah.
Yeah. I know what you do is more than just oversight. You're kind of, you're a counselor and a...
Yeah.
You've got to do all the things that go, go along with it.
Yeah.
I know one time, a few years back, when you came in and you talked about the difficulties and then when people are sentenced to serve, they don't have a lot of motivation really to perform. You know, they have put their time in, so, I mean, you've really got, it's hard to get sometimes to get people to really do the work rather than just put in the time. And I know it's a struggle and...
Yeah.
It's, it's, you know, what you do is a tough job.
Yeah, I've been lucky, I, I don't know if it's, I guess, my nature is that I get along with people. I am, I am pretty strict discipliner and you can ask any of my kids that. And that has a place, too, but I'm, I'm able to work with a pretty diverse crowd. And I seem to get along well with them and it seems like I always get the most I can out of them. And by the time they're done working, they're, they are contributing, whether they are at the start or not.
Right.
It's really very few times that I have to terminate somebody back to court because they wouldn't work for me or we couldn't get something done. So it's, and part of that's probably the nature of where we live, you know? We live in a great place, there's a lot of good people up here, and most people are hardworking people that just made a mistake, so...
I have to give some credit to the, to the unions, too, because when we first set this up, obviously, there was a fear, are we taking jobs away from union positions and stuff? It wasn't just here, across the region, we were hearing that.
Yeah.
But our unions were great and, and that's, that's worked out well, I've, it's never been an issue since.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think that's, again, a reflection of the excellent job that you've done, too.
Oh, thank you.
So you're still doing the trailers?
Yeah, still doing the cycle.
Any real problems there with...
You know, I pretty much handle the maintenance. I, like you say, counselor, all that, electrician, carpenter, every different possible thing you can do, you know? I, I just rewired the ends on all of the trailers to try to save costs because the county vehicles and my vehicle were the old-style adapter. Now they're going to the big plug and all. And now we have an adapter into that, and the adapter's broke all the time because the pins broke off. I just switched all of the trailers over so that they plug into our vehicles, should be way less cost in the long run and function better, so...
With only one crew leader and, and when you hurt your shoulder and stuff, how, how did, did it continue then or how does that work?
Well, it kind of got, the court kind of let them work what they call community work service, which really, there is no such thing in this county, so all the hours got done then. And they, I'm sure there were stricter things, probably maybe more people went to jail than normal and that kind of thing, but...
Probably credit to Judge Duke because I know he's a big, big supporter.
Yeah, and he has been good.